The project has evolved quite a bit. It's been pretty fluid as long as we're open. You want me to speak to the environmental study and then the timeline?
Right now, they're completing their, for six years, they've been working on environmental report required by federal highway administration. That is scheduled to be completed by September of 21. There's a couple of projects going on in the end ones, so River Overpass project which is in design. And I'm very glad you're part of the work.
I'm on the doorstep. I like that very thing out there about the moves, what used to be.
Okay, that's in a further phase of the project. There isn't a hard timeline right now. The time for the dates for to start that project in 23.
That'd be the first.
First phase, first phase. We have to. The oak to oak, the mill. And if the funding is available, as a lot of this is on the federal highway. And so, and that's a two-year window. That's a two-year project if they go over pass over the tracks. And then the next phase would be going north from there to that track. Uh, yes. Yeah, so it'd be north from there. So realistically, you're about way in 25 to 27 range timeline for road construction in that area. There probably be, you know, two years before that in design, property acquisition for right wing. And then the last phase is for the transition from Division Street to US 3. So realistically, you're looking at probably about a 10-year timeline.
Or the phase. Starting with over Brian and. Or the whole thing?
The whole thing. You're probably looking at, I'm optimistic, a 10-year timeline.
So you're looking at a 10-year timeline. We've heard a lot of different.
I've been working on it since 1998. I've been working on it since 1998.
Oh, have you?
Yes, and I'll be retired before the first shelter.
I thought we did before I even had it. That's my wife getting really worried about it because, you know, we've been out here 20 plus years in that same house.
Understood.
And we heard that in order to do this project, they had to buy out 25 houses?
Yes. Probably not.
Uh, you know, that's going to be a fun. I just wondered, you know, like this is in a way, but is all that money already put away somewhere for the project or is it going to be borrowed from the government?
Well, this is a federal highway, so it's a federal aid project with a federal highway target. So the funding is split between the town and between the federal government. It's an 80-20, typically is an 80-20 split between those projects. And the, you know, the funding comes through the Northwest Indiana Regional Planning District. And they give about, currently, they give about $18 million a year in funding from the feds. And so they have to spread that out to three counties and certainly not insure those projects and everybody else's. So a lot of, a lot of the timing for these projects is contingent on the funding availability and the cost of the projects when they come in. So as I say, there's no hard, hard schedule on them because in all of your, your just point out, we call it the down money. It's the money paid for. The town created the Kennedy Avenue district back in 2000 in order to provide funding. So the town has the funding secured for their portions of this project.
Okay. So this project probably will be get started for how many years?
On the short side, three years.
Three years?
Three years for the first phase.
Yes, which will be in town, right?
But we have Division Street on Kennedy from Division to Oak. And it includes the River Overpass.
Yeah, I heard about the overpass too. That they're, they're talking about letting in.
Let me give you my card. So if you have any questions, you can ask the whole team.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you for coming. Well, thank you. Thank you for our giving the apple. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any other business from the Florida Highway Development? During this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call the Urban Board meetings on Wednesday, November 18 at 7:15. Accept the vote call of the Sanders, the Development Board. Minutes of the October 14, 2020 public meeting, budget board.
Remove.
A motion is second. Any discussion? Do you want to move the papers? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold motion carries by zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Trossell?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Thank you. So moving on to claims. We have a motion.
Second.
For the second, any discussion? Do you want to move the papers? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold motion carries by zero. Reports from staff and development?
Are new reports.
Council members? There is no old business or no new business. Okay, any business from the Florida Highway Utilities? Any business from the Florida Highway Utilities? Any business from the Florida Highway Utilities? Do you want the PDA to adjourn or move into the town council meeting?
Good evening. I'd like to call the Town Council meeting from Wednesday, November 18 at approximately 7:16 PM. The vote call will state the same as the Arizona Board meetings. The first item on the agenda is the minutes of that October 14 and October 28 public meetings.
Remove.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero. Have signed some claims, Mr. Trossell. Any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Move to approve claims.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second on claim. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero. Reports, Mr. Volpin?
Yes, Mr. Smith, I have one, one request of the council. In, you know, this time of year, we've worked on longevity for all of our employees and, and like that Mr. Trossell is now a clerk treasurer. The clerk treasurer position is a longevity qualified position. Mr. Trossell being a longstanding employee of the town as a council member for the last 20 years. There, you know, our past history has been that we've always given employees work for the town although he's an elected official, we give him credit traditionally for every every year of service part-time, we give him half credit for his longevity. So if you would consider Mr. Trossell's tenure as a council member as the same as a part-time employee, I would look for a motion from the council to allow allow them to get the credit, half credit for his years of service for his longevity qualification for his position as clerk treasurer.
And he was on the council 20 years, so your interpretation is that half credit would be 10 years longevity?
That's correct.
Mr. President, I would make the motion that we award Mr. clerk treasurer Mike Trossell 10 years longevity based upon his 20 years of service as town councilman.
A second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero.
Thank you for your consideration, council members.
This is Volpin. Any other reports?
No other reports.
Mr. Semsted, I mean.
No reports.
Mr. Yu, it's like public reports.
No report.
Mr. Garner.
No report.
Attorney Austin. Mr. Trossell.
I know the police.
Council members.
Just like to thank Mr. Dwyer. Traffic on Main Street has been quite, you know, backed up. Their product, the sequence of lights issue on Main Street was causing the backups. I appreciate your, your time and diligence, Jeff. Mr. Simmons and staff, who love to do traffic study, the LZ engineering. I think with that synchronization, timing adjustments we're going to see some nice traffic for first change on Main Street, especially given the 45th Street project is adding to the flow of traffic. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Any other comments from council members? I'm sorry, I forgot Chief Sorans. Do you hear me?
Nothing to report, Mr. Councilman.
Deputy Chief Jeff Hope.
Nothing to report.
And Deputy Chief Dick Lyer from Fire.
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on. The next item is, uh, next item is public comments regarding the Den Island. Any public comments regarding the Den Island? Public comments regarding the Den Island. We'll close that to the public and we'll move into old business. First item is considered a variance of use to allow automotive and tire service facility and a potential restaurant to be located within US 41 Commercial Corridor, Olae District. This was deferred from October 14, 2020 meeting. It's a DCA case 20-7-23. The petitioner is SEC Rock 41 and 67 LLC. Location in west of 1465 US 41. It came to the Town Council with favorable recognition from the DCA from 3 to 1. This is to allow and excluding use in the Rock 41 Olae District. Mr. Volpin, any comments?
Yes, Mr. President. This is for the area there on 41, it's 37 and 41. It's proposed for a belt tire. It was in front of the DCA and it came coming before you were there for a recognition. A little bit unusual because it is not a lot of use within, within our old district.
A question from Mr. Volpin.
Sir, the county.
Mr. Volpin, was there, you know, part of the moment, one of the variants is regarding unnecessary hardship? Is that defined, defining that?
No, I don't think so.
Mr. President, Mr. Trossell. Considering this DCA case 20-7-23, as this is not a lot of use on the developed district ordinance and we're being held because showing the one necessary parties to the money to deny the petition for a variance of use on the DCA case 20-7-23, petitioner has seen Rock 41, 67 LLC or petition in west of 1465 US 41 despite the favorable recognition of the Town Council by the DCA.
A second. We have a motion. We have a second. I vote, right, hold on. Mr. Trossell.
I just want to say something before we take the vote. As we had the discussion before the back, I mean, I understand the organ, the department of mine myself, the town part that organized 2012 with it, I think. And of course, in my opinion, anytime that we, it's very likely to happen. But I always feel like this is, looks like Shererville wants to come into Shererville. You should feel very honored for that. You give up the dollars, tax-based dollars every morning you give up. And like I said, we really need people at the orgies. Because what was good back then doesn't necessarily mean it's good now. So I hope somewhere along the line we can get things amended. Hopefully, maybe, you know, the town can compare. There's studies on belt tires. It's a, it's a very open facility. And we'd very probably have a good show. So I just wanted to get that out there for the record.
A lot of the favorable recognition to the town council, you know, it's terrible and it's.
Exactly, because there was no restoration or anything.
Thank you, Mr. Trossell. We have a motion. We have a second. On the floor, Mr. Trossell, please take the vote call.
Council Johnson?
Yes.
Council Hanny?
Yes.
Council Maradona?
No.
Council Maradona?
No.
Council Harschman?
Okay, next item is new business. Orders 1959, ordinance establishing compensation and salaries and wages for officials and employees of the town sheriff of Lake County, Indiana classified certain positions of employment together with rates of pay. If you don't have any prior ordinances in conflict here with this and declaring that reimbursement exists. Mr. Volpin?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, this is the annual salary ordinance for the town employees. It includes some minor changes due to position adjustments. And it also reflects a 3% raise across the board for all employees.
Mr. President, motion to approve. The ordinance 1959, ordinance establishing compensation, salaries, wages for officials and employees of the town sheriff of Lake County, Indiana, et cetera. I'm ready.
Second. Do you have a motion and a second? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero.
Mr. Washington, can you adopt this, Mr. Trump?
You may.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Do you have a motion to adopt? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero. I B is resolution 20-20-17, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town Sheriff of Lake County, Indiana to provide reimbursement of public health and public safety payroll costs for Federal Cares Act of the coronavirus grant funding and all matters related thereto. Mr. Volpin?
I have a yield to the clerk treasurer money box. Yes, this is a present, this is a resolution that is needed in order to receive some of the COVID funds that are coming from the Indiana financial authority for COVID, so this is a, I mean, say, where the council is asking that we have this ordinance passed in order to receive the funding we have for reimbursement of the cause of COVID.
Thank you, Mr. Trossell.
Mr. President, move to approve resolution 20-20-17.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero.
Thank you.
I B C is consider variance of use to allow permanent placement of comics boxes on site for storage of construction equipment and a stone barrel parking area. This is DCA case 20-10-26. The petitioner is Suck Services Incorporated, Manager of the Reef. Location is 322 West Division Street. Favorable DCA recognition or deal conditions limited to eight pack boxes on site and in pack boxes may not be stacked subject to this petitioner only. Mr. Volpin?
Yes, this is the property at Division Street, it's happened in both. It's a part of I V parcel. It's long venues for trucking, visiting company there. Tech services, both asphalt work, there are uses as a changing area and a wooden storing cart. They just purchased the property here recently, last week. It's in front of the bank mission and, and from the DCA. It's appropriate DCA action based on the recent years.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Trossell, motion to approve DCA case 20-10-26 for condition. Second. We have a motion and we have a second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero.
Thank you.
I B is consider approval of payment in the amount of $15,000 to Beano Estats involved LLC for completion of the facade program. This came from the lead office.
Mr. President?
Motion to approve. Thank you, Johnson. We have a motion to approve from Mr. Trossell.
Thank you.
All, motion and a second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Consider extension, I'm sorry, I B extend, consider extension of the coffee services contract pricing for Colby and Company Incorporated through the year of 2021. Mr. Volpin?
Since CJ, it was launched from Colby and Company to extend their contract for coffee services to the town for next year, hold the price the same as this year.
Mr. Volpin?
Yes.
Have we extended contracts for our own, or anything, we have contracts on, you know, lawn service?
They have to, they have to offer to extend.
Have most of them done that though?
This is the only one I've received so far. Have you received any other ones? Just this one, just this one is the only one that we've received so far this year. Maybe, maybe, like asphalt products, that might be what was to be then because, you know, fuel prices have been depressed this year, which also bring down asphalt prices.
Well, I always think in the top of the list is what that $10,000, $200,000, you know.
Do you have a motion on the board? Okay, motion to approve of coffee and services with contract pricing with Colby and Company through the year 2021.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero.
I got it.
I have this consider acceptance of donations for $280,000 to the town. Mr. Trossell, would you gladly read that for us?
Yes, I will. I have attendance as well, but we had, first of all, to the Department of Transit from Dirtwood Collection Company in donations to State Park, $200,000. To the Animal Control, we have to the Sherrill Police Department donation, $30,000. To Veterans Memorial, William and Phil of the Nerdic, Veterans Grid Order, $50,000. Total money is donated for the month of October, $280,000. And this is that we see place from September and October donations to the Sherrill Animal Control, some in kind donations. These are donated by Goldberry Family, Amanda Claire, Grandma Sanibel, Chute.com, Anonymous. And these are items such as Blue Buffalo Homestyle Dog Ret Food, Dog Ret Carnis, Blue Buffalo Kitten Ret Food, Stuart's Free Bird Treats, New York Cat Ret Food, Wellness Kitty Ret Food, Six Inch Boomy Stick Dog, Crisp Shred Rind Pack, Frisco Baking Soda 4 Pounds, Titan's Chicken 35 Pounds, Australian Cheese, Ham and Lonnie's Purges, and Rescue Rice. These in kind donations sold $470,000.30. Thank you.
Motion to approve, please. Thank you, Mr. Trossell. We have a motion on the floor. Second. We have a motion and a second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
I vote the pass is by zero, thank you. At this time, I will move it up to the floor. Any business from the floor? At this time, uh, I will go up to the floor, any business from the floor. Please step up and state your name and address.
I'm in Scotty Hunt, uh, address is twenty-four thirteen Complete Drive, in Sherable. I think they're priced for a hundred. I'm in Scotty Hunt, uh, the twenty-four thirteen Complete Drive, in Sherable. And I think you hopefully are already aware of what I'm going to talk about and it's a request to join the regional collaboration on climate. Um, so this is a NERC, Indiana University, Brazilians cohort campaign, which is the first step to addressing climate change by creating a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for Sherable to provide the data necessary in trying to reduce emissions. If you can't measure it, you can't manage it. Monster Island Report over in Valco have already signed up. Gary Evansville, fourth way, New Ocean have already gone through this program. So we have access to perspectives from these towns, if you wanted that. The inventory located approximately four months and will report emissions for transportation, energy use, waste water treatment, solid waste. The cost of the town, because this is through a grant, will be thirteen hundred dollars, which is payable in March of twenty-one. And this pays for an undergraduate or undergraduate student who will be taking the inventory. It will require us to identify one person per town to meet the intern as early as one to two hours per week and participate in a bi-weekly, one-hour webinar training between April and September of twenty-one. With this program, Sherable can begin to mitigate climate change in the better future for it, save money and reinvest savings in other projects that benefit the community, improve local air quality and public health, which also impacts our vulnerability to COVID, support local college students and mitigate brain drain, gain an economic competitive advantage in the region. The bottom line is that this type of inventory would easily cost twenty to forty thousand dollars if we tackled it ourselves. This funding is through an I U grant, so there's no guarantee the grant will be available next year. So we, we really have to take this step now. It is simply the right thing to do, and I believe the residents of Sherable would welcome this type of initiative, especially at its cost. Um, so the grant's application deadline is like in a couple of days. So, um, I think thirteen hundred dollars for something this big is well worth it. That's it.
Coincidentally, we, we actually just authorized the town manager's, uh, send off that letter.
You're, uh, right on the same page as I am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. And, uh, that letter, that letter will get drafted tomorrow and we'll have that sent to the NERC. Any other business on the floor?
Uh, good evening. My name is Jim Weiser. I was at seventy-three forty in Manchester, land in Sherable. Uh, and, you know, just to hold disclosure, I was the attorney, or am the attorney for the project issue on code denied tonight. Um, just a couple of comments. I don't have to re, re, realligated or bring back up because, uh, three of the councilmen, interestingly enough, the three who denied it, sat through a very lengthy presentation that we made, which convinced the D Z eight to approve it. People that you hire and you appoint to do the heavy lifting and to make the tough decisions, because they get all the information, you don't get the information, they get the information. And on that basis, they made the decision. But just a couple of thoughts about that decision. Um, I couldn't agree more with Mr. Getzlaw. There were no remonstrators. At least, there were no remonstrators that had the guts to show up and cover. We know who the remonstrators are. We know who the business people are, they call people to make the decisions, we get that. The silent remonstrators, they'd actually make the decisions in this community. And made this decision tonight, and a shameful, totally shameful. I'm embarrassed as a, as a citizen, not as an attorney. I'm embarrassed as a citizen in this community. That project was going to, just the beginning of the project, just belt tire, was going to result in over sixty thousand, actually sixty thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars in middle state taxes annually, and it needed three million dollars on a parcel of property that you haven't been able, and nobody has been able to develop in this community for twenty years, and particularly for the last years, because what you have is a discriminatory, an extremely discriminatory, anti-competitive, overly district that specifically, that excludes specific businesses so they won't be in competition, as was stated at the D Z eight meeting. Why that ordinance was adopted, to keep that business out. And yet, that's the action that you took. I, I, I'm just, I'm not here to determine, I'm here as a citizen of this, of this town who says, what's going on? I gotta pay taxes. We all have to pay taxes. You're not gonna do anything to help us out by spreading that tax base. You're taking the national business and saying, we don't need you, we don't want you. And we don't want you because we don't want you to compete against guys that are calling us on the phone. It's unbelievable, absolutely unbelievable. And, and, and it's a sad state of affairs in this community and in this government. And I just thank both the government and, and Mr. Getzlaw for doing the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Reesley. Any other comments on the floor?
I'm in Jim McAlcy, you own Elwood Chapel, and I am not a resident of Sherable. I have a business in St. John. And I respect the decision to uphold the smaller businesses, but I myself compete against Chapel One Cemetery, Elwood Casket Company, and I'm doing okay. And I, yeah, tax loss revenue, I think I read in the Northwest Times about you hire additional public works employees or firefighters. And I think that that tax money could have been used, and I hope to reconsider. And I thank the two officials that owed it and keep us in mind in the future. Because the people that own that property are good people. And like I said, if you get up in the morning as a small business owner and you work your ludus maximus off, you're gonna defeat the big guy. So the guys, the small people that are worried, if you work hard, it all works out. And I think I've done very well competing against the big companies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCutcheon. Any other comments on the floor? Any other comments on the floor? No more business on the floor, just a few adjournments.